All right, it is 8:30, so I will call the meeting to order. We'll staff for the pledge of allegiance. And a welcome to our new Commissioner, Angie Boersma, and on our other side, our new State Attorney, Dan Nelson, to our meeting today. Item number three is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. I don't see anyone in attendance who would like to add an item, so we'll move on to item four, which is approval of the agenda. We will like to, I need to add an executive session, SDCL 1-25-2, item one, personnel, and item three, consulting with legal counsel. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, is there any comments on the agenda?
Is that agenda or consent agenda?
Consent agenda. Agenda, excuse me. Approval of the agenda, yes. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Now the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular allowances, approval of documents for technology step-ins. I think that's it. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, any comments from anybody? Bearing none, we'll have a roll call on the consent agenda.
Boersma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six, routine business. Item A is approval of claims. Need a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any comments on the?
I do have a question, just to clarify.
Commissioner Jensen.
Brian, I asked you earlier, the BX Civil and Construction, the stored material third payment, can you explain that to the rest of the board?
Um, I did mention to you earlier, I had talked to the supplier, which is BX Civil, and that is just the final payment for the, uh, material that is being stored, and I guess it was just labeled as storage, but it is for the actual material itself.
That's for those short structures that didn't get done last.
Correct.
And I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Commissioner Pierce?
So I have a question on the BOAC, that's $7,000 to Jack Rabbit Sports. What was, what was that for, and I see it's in the 2018 claims, was that in your budget?
That is for the advertising that we're going to be doing with SDSU. So that is, we had a $20,000 budget in publishing, and so that is part of the advertising budget we had, and that line item actually is 18,000. However, we went over so far in other areas that that line item, while under other areas, of course, went so far over, that that is why that is part of that contingency fund. But that is advertising, that's actually going towards SDSU advertising.
And that all went through the board out there?
It's just part of the advertising that we have for.
We don't usually itemize out the budgets, it's basically staying involved with it. She has the ability to spend it where she wants it, I guess. If she has some concerns of where she should, she brings it up, otherwise, kind of, her budget to work with, so.
So the, the budget of the, um, OAC budget then, approximately a third of the advertising budget goes to SDSU, is that?
It, it is for this particular project. This is going to be for football games, basketball games, wrestling, so we'll have 30-second commercials, we'll have advertising at all basketball games, wrestling games, as well as in their programs, we'll actually have our logo on mats during wrestling games. So this reaches a target market that we have not, um, ever put into play.
And then will you track what kind of return you get off of that?
We do.
It's a big investment, that's why I was asking.
We actually spent the exact same amount with Brookings Radio last year, just in a monthly payment instead of all at once.
And then I had a question for the sheriff, and I can't find the line item sheriff, but there was a payment on like 600 and some dollars for repair to a patrol car. Is that something new, or is that one of the things we've talked about before? Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Bearing none, we'll call a roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Boersma? Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is our department head reports, we'll start with Brian.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, I don't have a whole lot to report, other than our snow removal, uh, taking place the last couple of weeks here. Seemed to get out ahead of the ice, and, uh, seemed to keep ahead of the traffic too, so that was kind of nice. Is there anything that you guys got for me?
Any questions for Brian? Bearing none. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Marty?
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just talk a little bit about snow removal too, we had minimum issues, um, Connington County and north of us had a lot more problems than we had, so for, for what, the amount of snow and stuff, we, uh, we came out of it pretty good. Had some slide-ins, few accidents and so forth. Otherwise, uh, been staying busy, uh, at the jail. I give you guys a lot of information, so you just have to pick through what you want to look at and so forth. 24/7 continues to stay busy with, um, with UAs and so forth, as I had mentioned before, we average about 152 UAs a week with 24/7 and, and, uh, also with probation and drug court, and Hope Court will be starting soon, and that'll probably bring some more UAs. So it's, I have a lot of congestion, I've asked a couple of times about moving forward on the 24/7 addition, is that I have a lot of congestion in that 24, in the, in the, in the control room here, in the booking area, and it's, uh, what's bad is when I have 24/7 people in there that are violated or whatever, city police bring somebody in that's fighting, they're all in the same area, and it's just, it's, it's just not, uh, you know, it worked for a while, but it's just not working, so we need to think about where we're going to go in that direction. Also, for Christmas, I had a rural businessman that, uh, gave the sheriff's office $800, and, uh, got eight $100 bills, and wanted to find random people to give $100 to. And I think Commissioner Jensen was in my office, and I gave one of them in my office, that her husband had bypass surgery and, and didn't have money to get to Sioux Falls, happened to give her a secret Santa right there in my office, so we made eight people pretty happy. And so I'll, I'll go over with the person that, that gave us the money, and he thought if it went over good, next year he'd give more, so, uh, I thought that was pretty nice. We tried to find people that, that were having, having a, had a, they're having a bad Christmas, and, and so it worked out good. So we made some people happy anyway. Usually law enforcement will make people happy, but we did make eight people happy over Christmas, so, anyway. Also, this past weekend, emergency, uh, welfare checks and so forth, uh, we had three at the hospital Sunday night, one was transported to Yankton, the other two, one was a juvenile overdose, and then another one, but they were able to handle it with the local counselors and stuff, so we only transported one. So our mental health continues to stay busy, uh, so that's just another area that we have a concern with, uh, as far as trying to handle those situations. Also, I had, you know, I asked for, um, to, um, hire, is I had two deputies resign, they, they only gave me a six-day notice, and I'm not real happy about that, that I have to accept that, they went to the city police, and, uh, that puts a bind on me, because two is my contract deputies, and I have four municipalities, the contract law enforcement with me, and that's there too, that, they pay for that, so actually, that doesn't come, that comes out of my budget, but we get reimbursed by the four contract towns. I have to provide 60 hours patrol service for Voga, 10 for Aurora, 10 for White, and 18 for Elkton, so when I'm two officers down, that puts a bind on my other ones. So I, what I had to do is that I pulled my school resource officer out of the school, so he's back on patrol. I do have two investigators, because Brookings is, I'm busy enough that I have plenty of work for two investigators, but I pulled one of my investigators and put him on the road, and I pulled my court security deputy and put on the road, and so, uh, the detention center's going to have to handle, between Bart and the sergeant will have to handle court security and transportation. My court security guy puts a lot of, lot of time in between courts and transportation, so it, it'll put a little bind on us, but it's just going to be temporary. I have one deputy, so I'm three deputies down right now, because I have one deputy at the academy, and he'll be done March 1st, so I'll have him back on the road March 1st, so, but my biggest thing is, is to make sure I maintain my contract pounds, because they pay us almost $200,000 a year for those two deputies, so, so I have to provide that service for them. My thing is, is that I just had to wait, because they resigned at Christmas, and I had to wait till now to get approval, so it puts a little, I, I'm, I'm back three weeks, almost two weeks on the hiring process, so I don't know if I, there's any way I can speed things up next time, hopefully I don't lose two at a time, but, uh, it does put a bind on me to wait for approval when, you know, I'm not hiring new people, I'm just trying to replace people and get our process going, so, anyway. Any questions?
On, on that or on your report, I have a question on the report.
Sure.
On the mental health commitments, I can't remember this. When Dan provides the state's attorney's annual report, do they have a category on there on mental health, that, where it says BCSO, mental health committals, is there, is that a difference between your numbers and the state's attorney's number, is that going to be the same number?
No, it's going to be different, because they're, they're going to have, um, see, my numbers in, in the police department will be the same, because we're, it, it depends on what they, and actually, Mr. Nelson probably isn't aware of, with, and he maybe is, on the tracking at the state's attorney's office, is that he may track, they may track ones that come into their office and ask, but nothing ever, it doesn't go forward, so I'm not sure how they're tracking it at, at their office, uh, because we wanted to know, remember when we had our task, our task force and looking into mental health, there's lots of times that we deal with individuals that we don't send to Yankton, but we wanted to track that information, so we know what kind of issues we have, and that was set up at the, the state's attorney's office to track some of that, because there was times that people would go into there, family, loved ones would go into there to say, you know, my daughter or whatever, and they were going to track those types of things too, so those numbers may not match.
So when we look at your report, then the 60 would be the number for people that were actually committed?
They're, they're the actually ones that were transported to either Avera Health or Yankton, yes.
Okay, and then we would have had 15 more that were not committed, either for some reason, the court didn't approve or whatever.
Counselor cleared them, you know, uh, when we go on a welfare check, you know, we always call a counselor, the counselor is good about either coming to the residence or coming to the sheriff's office, and then if they clear them, uh, they sign a document saying that, that they're clearing them at that particular time, and then they don't get transported anywhere. We take, either take them back home, or a loved one gets them, or, or whatever, so.
Is your office involved in the voluntary committals then?
No.
And those we're not tracking anywhere, is that correct?
No, we're not tracking voluntary, no. Only if they come to my office, or come to law enforcement, and, and we are involved in some way, but there's a lot that are, that are through a counselor at the hospital or whatever, that I don't know anything about. Does that make, does that make sense?
It does.
Any other questions for Marty? Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay.
Next we'll have Kristen.
I'll make this brief, um, because we have a formal report that'll come out to you guys at the next meeting, plus I want to go over some of this in the board meeting before I give all this out to you guys. Just a couple of things, one, we had the National Guard 22 tournament this last weekend, they love the facility, we had about 120 shooters that came through, we're still finding shell casings in random places, so obviously it, it went off great, um, they love the facility and they'd like to do it again next year, so, um, that worked out fantastic. Even with the, um, 22 tournament, we still had a gross income of over $1,200 that weekend, so we still had people coming in, using the other ranges, having day passes, so that didn't affect the performance of the facility as a whole. So just a tidbit on that one, we evaluated the cost of ammunition for the year and did adjust those prices, on some of them we were high, some of them we were low, so, uh, we did just adjust that to reflect the current price of ammunition for our rental, our rentals. I also evaluated the cost per day, um, for the use of the facility, just based on basic utilities, so water, sewer, gas, garbage, you know, our, our basic overhead, and that comes out to $115 a day to run the facility, and that is, like I said, our actual utility costs. Our line item for that is 30,000, even in this year's budget, and our actuals came out to 42,000 and some change, so just kind of keeping that in mind, and that's 2019's budget going forward, uh, but it's nice to have that physical cost and knowing what that is going forward. One of the things we're going to need to look at pretty quickly is a, a new point-of-sale system, we're having issues with our actual tax calculations, and the last three financial weekly cycles that we've done, we've had to actually calculate that tax, um, that we give to Vicki by hand, the report is no longer being generated, and because it's an open-source program, meaning it's a free software, um, there is no technical support. So we've been in contact with GovTeller and CP Teller, who is the credit card processor, to see if they have software that directly integrates with them, since we have to keep that credit card system, so working with them to see what is our best solution there, and hopefully we'll have something to bring to the advisory board at that next meeting, and so that way, since we're still in January, it's a, an easy transition right here at the first of the year. On a very, very high note, um, according to Vicki, she got this to me yesterday, we ended the year with $100,598.89 in revenue, so.
Say that number one more time.
So, I, I just was pretty happy. Any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners? Bearing none, thank you Kristen, that's a good number. All right, Misty?
Good morning. I don't have a whole lot, uh, I do want to let you know, I did go down and pick up our Kubota that we had ordered, uh, he was urgent that we get it, he said, "Come pick it up, so that way you have it, otherwise you're going to be waiting a while." So I went down, picked it up last, yesterday, excuse me, and, um, on the 25th, I'll run a check down, get all the paperwork, get all the information from him, because that's our next pay cycle. So we do have our Kubota in our shop, I'm still working on the spray systems, because I've got two companies that are going back and forth, I want to take the cheapest bid with the best equipment, so we're still waiting on the spray system for it. Otherwise, that's kind of what's happened in the last day or so, that's more important. Also, I sent letters out to township boards, I've heard back from two. So I will be on the phone calling, trying to meet with everybody, and it seems like everybody wants to meet the last week in January. I'll do my best to meet with them all, and hopefully get a plan set up for each township, possibly get some more townships back, working with the county, other than hiring out like they have been, so. Checked on chemical prices, it's not feasible, it's too, there's, it's cost way too much. So I have a plan, but I want to get a better plan set in stone before I say anymore. But otherwise, I don't have anything else, does anybody have any questions for me?
Questions?
About not feasible, so is that what we're charging them, or it's not feasible for them to do it on their own, or how, what, are we, do we need to adjust our prices then?
The chemical I want to use is $10,000 per 250-gallon tote. That's too much. I, I looked back at what we used, just 240 last year, and we used about 2,500 gallons of 240 last year, that's just 240. I was looking at using Grayson Next, um, for the right-of-ways, but with that $10,000 per tote, that's quite a bit of chemical. I'd like to do some more figuring, to know that I'm taking the correct route, and make it feasible for everybody. Did that answer your question, Ryan?
Yeah, I didn't, I just didn't know how, how that tied in with the townships and meeting with them.
Their costs'd go up.
Okay.
I guarantee you their costs would go up.
And then, the question though is then, are they feeling that it's too expensive, and that they're going to go to private spraying rather than, than us, is, is, are we better to have them, or charge them more, or not to have them onboard?
Well, that's, that's what I was going to address, the, the carryover on the Grayson Next will, you should give the townships an option if they want to use the 240 or the Grayson Next for the carryover, because it, they'll, will get better coverage with the Grayson Next, and more control, and you have to, you'll have to figure out a price, make it comparable to cover your costs.
Yep, yep, and that's where I'm at. I haven't got that completely figured out yet, working on it. I mean, I'd like to use it, because say next year, we won't have to use as much, we should have more of a residual, like Larry was saying, carryover, so we won't have to have as much chemical on hand, if we can get the townships to work with us. That's my goal, because this is our county, and we service them, yes, for a price, but I'd like to keep it that way, rather than having some, some other individual come in and just spray whatever they want to spray. We need to take care of our county.
Any other questions? Thank you, Misty.
Thank you.
Mike?
Good morning. I don't have a whole lot for you, our numbers are down a little bit as far as the welfare side, we're seeing a little, oh, probably about, uh, level as far as veterans' activity at this particular time, uh, we will be taking part in the homeless count, that'll be coming up here next week, and, uh, right now, we, all of our federal, we've used all of our federal funds, um, we had to use them up by January 15th, and, and we've succeeded in doing that, and so that's why you'll see on our report, a lot of the things other form, uh, other funds were used.
Any questions?
Not a question, but I'd like to make a comment. I was talking to somebody that had a question about veterans' benefits, and I gave them your name and phone number, and they called you, and then they told me what a wonderful help you were, and what a great job you do, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? The only one I have is, how do you, how do you, how do you do the homeless count? You said that's coming up, what's the process?
And it's supposed to be on the, on the 22nd, I believe it is, either 21st, 22nd, and, uh, basically, we look back and see what we have as far as people have talked with us, or ones that we know about, um, it's between us, uh, social services, ICAP, and they try to get a rough number of how many are homeless in, in Brookings County. Most of the time, it's, it's kind of almost, it's, it's very hard for us to figure it out, and what we just have to is rely on who we know.
Do you have any numbers from the past?
Usually our numbers have only been one or two as far as our office concerned. ICAP, uh, because of their, a lot of the homeless people have children, and ICAP does more with children than we do, and so they get a little better number than that, and all, same way with social services, so, we're a small portion of it, but we do participate.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mike. Marty, you look like you want to say something.
Law enforcement's involved with that count too, and since I'm on the Salvation Army Board too, both the police department and myself have, have money for motel rooms and stuff, and so if I happen to put one up in the motel during that count, then that's considered homeless, homeless if they're homeless, so, so it's usually one or two a year too, that, that I report during that time.
And that might be somebody who's transient?
Right.
But still gets counted?
Right. A lot of times what we do is, if they're homeless, I may put them up one night, and then put them on the beta bus for $20 and get them to Sioux Falls, to the homeless shelters there.
Thank you. Mr. Hill?
Good morning.
Marty?
The, uh, I won't say, I'll be short. The Brookings County Development Department, we got notification that our local emergency planning grant was approved for $1,715.85, that'll be, that was during budget hearings for 2019, that was put into the revenue line, so that's already been counted. Saturday, I went over and assisted the local Boy Scout troop to learn a little bit more about my office's dealings with emergency management. Tonight, we have a planning meeting scheduled at 7:00 PM, it will be broadcast, but from what I understand, it, it's not able to be recorded, such as your commission meeting is today, because our planning meeting's happening at the same time as a county, uh, city council meeting, but, uh, we are still going to have ours recorded digitally, so if anyone wants to hear a copy of it, we can, we can put the digital copy wherever someone wants to, wants to hear it. There's a joint jurisdiction area planning meeting scheduled for 9:30 tomorrow morning on this floor. Thursday, we got a pandemic planning coordinating committee meeting, at, at 12 o'clock noon over at the hospital. Thursday night, at 7:00 PM, we got the Brookings County Firefighters Association meeting, and there I am going to be meeting with them, and I'll have my, my county laptop, and I'll be able to show what name tags and stuff that each fire department has already requested, and give them the opportunity to sign up for more credentialing cards and things like that. Next Monday and Tuesday, if it has been approved, there is a class called joint, called jurisdictional threat and hazard identification and risk assessment, it's called THIRA, it's required for any of our, our FEMA grants, to have that plan on file with the Department of Homeland Security. We do have one on file right now, but it needs to be updated, so that's why I'm, I'm heading to that class. Work on the zoning ordinance will continue until it is completed, I will talk a little bit about that when I get to my other report I got in front of me. We are working on completing our, our state and local agreement for the first quarter 2019, at the next commission meeting, I'll probably have to have a special thing on the agenda to discuss the SLA, it has changed a little bit since, probably the first major change probably in 15 years, so it might pay me to go through and just, just go line by line and, and let the commissioner know what's going on there. On Friday, I have, I will be discussing Madera Township's drainage issue with the NRCS out of, out of Huron, and I wanted to know, do you have anything specific that you want me to address? What we're doing there is, you may realize, this is, this is ongoing all the way back to, um... to September of last year. And what my goal is to do is to get a meeting set up with the Drainage Board and the NRCS, and we're going to invite, like, banners associated, of, of engineering firm that's involved in the issue, and Madera Township officials, to come into a meeting with the, with the Drainage Board and, and discuss the issues. Is there anything more specific that the county commission would like? What, what my plan on doing is getting a date that we can meet in the future, obviously. The NRCS wants to know what we're going to talk, what, what we want to know, I guess is what they want to know, is why they don't want to just set a blind meeting up and come in and, and be blindsided. I'm, I'm talking to an NRCS supervisor out of Huron.
Are they going to be here, or you're going?
No, on the telephone.
On the telephone.
And I'm going to set up a meeting. The goal is to set up a meeting in the future for the Brookings County Drainage Board to meet with the NRCS, and we'll invite the other parties that's involved in the, in the situation. We're involved mainly because we're the local municipal government. We're, we're the lowest level government that the NRCS were coming and discussed the issue with. So we're, we're going to be more mediators, I think, in the, in the case than, than anything. But we need to get the, this is, this is the only way to move forward, from what I can tell.
You know, and I, I don't mean to disagree with you, Bob, but I think we need to be more than mediators in this, and my recollection from our last meetings is that they will not participate if the county does not participate. Is that a fair statement? And we need them in order to take the next step forward in the Madera Township drainage problem, and they won't do anything if we're not participating, because they need a governmental entity, is that, do I remember that right, Bob?
Well, I guess I'll find out more Friday, but, but.
But mediation, I think we need to be more proactive than mediation. I think we should be taking a lead on this. I'm not saying that, that we have to make all the decisions, provide all the money, do any of those kinds of things, but our citizens in Madera Township have repeatedly reached out to us and asked for help, and what they need is some leadership in this problem to try to move things forward.
I also think that maybe contacting the chairman, I don't know if it's Mr. Richards, any, whoever's the chair of Madera Township be involved.
Oh, by, by all means, he, he had left me a message last, last month, near the end of the month when I was out of the office, and I tried to contact him this week and wasn't able to. Yes, by all means, I will contact him and get their notes before my meeting on Friday, by all means. And I agree with you, Commissioner Pierce, full heartedly. It's, it's just, I'm not the one that can take the action. It's the Drainage Board as a whole that can, that has the power. So, yeah, all I, all I am doing is, is getting the parties together to mediate, but by all means, I, I fully expect the county commission to, as, acting as a Drainage Board, to, to take the lead as, as appropriate.
And Bob, could you bring Brian up to speed on what's going on out there, so he knows how the, the roads are affected in that area?
Yep, it is a county road that's affected, and I'll, I'll get with him one-on-one in his office. Any other comments on the Madera Township? Yes, sir.
Still, the Corps though, I mean, Corps of Engineers, they're the ones that have the decision-making power along the Big Sioux, correct?
Yes, we will, and I've been in contact with the Corps too, and, and the Corps will come anytime we, we want them.
Okay.
Our holdup up until now has always been the NRCS, so once we get the NRCS on, at least talking to us in their appropriate manner, then we'll bring the Corps on. We don't necessarily need the Corps, at least, no, you can, you can over brag me on this, but I feel our first meeting probably needs to be with the NRCS and their supervisor, because we're bringing in the supervisor from the NRCS to, to this meeting. Meet with them, figure out what's going on with the, with the 99-year leases and stuff like that, that the Corps has no, they don't care one bit about, any, any of the paperwork.
And so that was, that was what I was kind of leading to, so there, this meeting will help with their issue of moving the water back into the channel that does not flood 99-year easement leases down the, down the area, correct?
That's, that's, that's the plan.
Because in, previously, we were not getting any response from them, but we needed that because there's a, when you move that water, it has consequences, obviously, and, and the NRSS, NRCS is weighing in because it's going to affect the 99-year leases that are around the Big Sioux River.
And, and up until now, it's always, the answer's always been no, but, no. Now, we're bringing a supervisory personnel in from the NRCS to basically tell us yes or no. I mean, is it, is it feasible, or is it not feasible? And then, whatever the answer is, then we can have a bigger meeting and bring the, bring the Corps of Engineers in along with the NRCS along. And you know, it may come to a point where farther down the line, we've got to bring our legislative staff in Washington DC involved to, to get something going. We don't want to go that level yet. We want to start, stay in South Dakota, see what we can do, then if it comes to a point where we can't, where we just keep hitting the stone wall, then we draw our other avenues. And I want to get a lot of these avenues done before March, when we're in Washington DC, because that'd be an excellent time to bring up some of these issues if we have to.
Two other items related to that. I think part of the problem isn't just those people down, down river. NRCS wants to keep the water where it is for the easements, for the waterfall on the areas where the water is. So they like the water where it's at, is my understanding. Okay, and that's part of the problem with the easements. And then, I do think you're right, Bob, that we need to reach out and talk to these folks, but our next step should be, there is a state board that works specifically with these issues, and we should be talking to that state board. I, I feel like we've kind of beat our head a little bit on the hearing deal, and I think maybe it would not be detrimental for us to take the next step up in the state, so.
Commissioner Pierce, when you say that, are you talking about, when you say we need to step up, county commission, or the Drainage Board?
Our Drainage Board.
Which is the county commission?
Exactly.
Okay, just so the public understands that, we are also acting as the Drainage Board, so you're saying that suggestion, that the Drainage Board or the county commission? Which one?
Drainage Board.
Which entity is, Drainage Board entity should draft some sort of request? Okay.
And you're, and you are specifically addressing the Water Management Board, State Water Management Board, is that the board you're referring to at the state level?
I'd given you, I sat next to the gentleman on, a gentleman on that board at the last conference I was at, and, and I forwarded that information. I'll get it again and send it to you. I got to find it. I can't remember his position.
If you sent it to me, I, I should be able to access it. All right, we also, I'll start that one also, but I, I feel we still need to do the, the stuff of the NRCS out of Huron.
Yes, definitely.
If it all works out the way we would like it to work out, that would be a lot smoother way of doing it. It, once we start to get the State Water Management Board together, and then the Corps of Engineers, and then the NRCS, it's going to, it's going to end up being proact, protracted quite, quite. But, very good, I will get on top of that one. Anything else on that particular topic? Okay, next up, the NACO Legislative Conference is in March. Right now, we have got appointments with Senator Rounds and Thune, and I did not get one with Representative Johnson yet, I, that's my to-do list later today. As soon as we do know, and I'll work with Ms. Stephenson on what time these appointments are, so that whenever you guys, whoever's going to, to the Legislative Conference, understands that we won't be able to come back until after these meetings, so it's going to be a late night getting back in the, in the Sioux Falls, and you probably need to make your reservations as soon as you can for the flights, just to get the, the later flights. Next up, there, on the 16th, there's the Brookings Day in Pierre. I, I would like to drive my own county truck out with me and Mr. Hoehofer to do some, when, when we're out there, I, both of us like to, like to work with the City of Brookings people out there, but there's other places we can go and meet with different people, and such as me, I need to go talk to Mr. Wilcox on NACO stuff, and Mr. Hoehofer has to go to the veteran's side of the house, and there is a new Veterans Secretary out there now, and so I would, and plus, I don't necessarily need to lollygag around until 8 o'clock and, and start back on, on that day. So, if it's all right with the commission, I would like to request to be able to drive my own county truck. It'd be county fuel, so I'm, I'm not looking for any additional money, I'm just looking to let you know I'll be driving to Pierre and back. And the Brookings Home Show is March 9 through 10. I will be using local emergency planning committee funds once again, that's how we, we do that, but when we do have the home show, I've got an eight-foot table, I put up my local emergency planning committee brochures, but there's also room for other stuff from the county, so if other county agencies want to put up their flyers or whatever, they're more than welcome to, and they don't have to pay towards it, but we'll let the local emergency planning committee has a material fund, pay, pay for the booth. And the, the zoning board, it's been brought to my attention that the zoning board, our packets have been getting to be sometimes up to an inch to two inches thick when we mail them out, once a, once a month, and a proposal's been brought to me, which I'm going to talk to my zoning board tonight, I haven't, haven't had time to discuss it with them, but possibly getting them tablets to use, not the, not the iPads that you guys use, we're talking this, like a $150 Google tablet, and then doing all of our stuff via Dropbox, which I believe the commission has been doing now for a few years, instead of us mailing stuff out hard copy. Right now, when, when, when we do our agendas and everything, we do put our agendas online, and we put all of our materials online, on the internet already. So, but just, just be aware, I will be, be bringing back a proposal, depending on what happens tonight at the zoning board, I may be bringing a proposal on getting the zoning board tablets and going a little more digital and less paperless. Which brings me up to my end-of-year report for the, for the newest commissioner. I have got two, two sections under me. I got emergency management, and then I got planning, zoning, and drainage. The report that I attended, that I put into the packet, is my 2018 end-of-year report for the planning and zoning part of my office only. There'd be an emergency manager one put out at a later date, and it basically breaks down our, our, what we do in the planning and zoning world, and our chairperson's Robert Rochelle out of Elkton, vice-chairperson is Kimberly Alinkovich out of just north of Brookings, the secretary of the planning and zoning board is my staff. We had 11 regularly scheduled meetings, one joint city, one special, one work, and then four subcommittee meetings, and my, my zoning board, the, the appointed members get paid $50 a meeting, the county commission representative gets paid zero. During the year, we gave out 29, we had 29 applications for conditional uses, we issued 25 of them, one was denied, three were withdrawn, and one was a, one was a carryover from 2017. I'm getting, the, the, the next one is the variance requests. Actually, this one, this one comes out, surprised me a little bit, we are actually starting to say no. We had 19 requests, 15 of them were granted, three were denied, which I don't know if we'd ever be able to find three denied in the year previously, and one was canceled because of, it was determined it was not needed. 23 plats were reviewed, or approved, and the pre-plats are when they come in with idea on how to subdivide some property, and, and two pre-plats came in, one was approved, and one was withdrawn due to whatever, whatever reason came up. We had two rezoning requests. Typically, a rezoning request is either to put a business in an area, or to try to get a second house in an area. One was approved, one was not approved. Tax increment financing district was approved over by the City of Olga. We had one appeal heard during the year, it was denied. Our ordinance is amended, as you can see, we have done some of the zoning ordinance adoption, or, and we got a, got a few articles done over the past year, not, not as many as we'd like yet, but we did get the flood damage prevention part done, and diaphragm Okay, we did attend, we, we get our assistance from the First Association of Local Governments, and we attended the South Dakota Planters Association Conference that was held in Huron, all office staff, which is Richard Hoggan, Ray, Ray Lynn, Maher, myself, and then one board member, Roger Erickson out of Lake Campbell, all attended that. There were 192 building permits issued by Brookings County for a total construction cost of $142,674,575. And that has, in the back part, I won't go through all the historical stuff, but that's, that's one of our better years, and the reason for that is to win, we got a wind farm up to the north, our Coyote Ridge LLC, that came in, and that really bumped that up. I won't go through all, all the breakdown. This was set in the packet, so do you have any questions with the, with the report?
Any questions for Bob?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That completes our department head reports, I believe we got everybody, because Vicki's not here today. And you have the B note, the noted items, item C. Item one under item C is volunteers with the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center and severe weather storm spotters are to be listed in the minutes for work comp purposes, and there's two documents. Item two is Chairperson Bartley has authorized to sign Personnel Action Notice Forms for Robert Hill and Richard Hoggan to receive salary reimbursements from the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management, and there's a document under that. Number seven, item seven is a schedule of agenda items, we don't have any today, so we'll move on to regular business. Item A is an action to approve resolution number 19-01, a resolution setting meeting pay and per diem rates for volunteer county boards for 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any comments from the commissioners? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bozma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, an action to approve resolution number 19-02, a resolution setting the pay for election workers in 2019. Is there a motion to approve? Motion been made and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bozma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
I'm going to abstain, since my wife's one of them.
Motion carries.
The motion carries. Well, it's appropriate. Item C is an action to approve agreement number 19-01, a letter of agreement between Brookings County and First District Association of Local Governments to update the county's hazmat plan. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Bozma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action D here is an action to approve two requests to fill vacancies for deputy sheriff in the sheriff's department. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? Marty, I think you've covered this, but go ahead, Commissioner.
Marty, how long have these guys been serviced with the county?
Any other questions? Not, we'll call, this, this one here, all, all approved, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carries. Action E is an action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a full-time female correctional officer in the sheriff's department. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded.
How much does it typically cost to certify that a deputy, or?
Save that for the budget hearings. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion passes. All right. Action F here is an action to approve the Brookings Register, Volga Tribune, Tri-City Star, and Elkton Record as legal papers of Brookings County for 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion passes. Item G is an action to approve the official depository for Brookings County funds and monies for 2019 as follows. Richland State Bank, Bankstar Financial, Citizen State Bank, First Bank and Trust of Brookings, Dakota Bank, Wells Fargo, Great Western Bank, and Metabank. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion passes. Item H, an action to approve board assignments and department liaisons for 2019. I guess we should go through that since we don't have it first, and then we'll look for a motion to approve. I did do a little free work with most of you, and we'll just kind of go right down the list if you don't mind. On the 4-H Promotion and Expansion Committee, Commissioner Boorsma said she would serve on that one. Everybody okay with that? The Brookings Area Transit Authority, Beta, Commissioner Krogman is there and has expressed an interest to stay. Brookings County Regional Railroad Authority is two members. They don't meet very often. Krogman and Jensen have been on that committee and have asked to stay. The Brookings Economic Development Corporation, BEDC, Commissioner Pierce would like to stay there, and I will be the alternate. Brookings County Extension Board, Commissioner Jensen will replace Commissioner Miller. Communities of Excellence Representative, and we have an alternate representative. Krogman took the representative position and Pierce the alternate representative. This is a relatively new position, and they were going to serve on that. Next one is Domestic Abuse Shelter, and I was, Commissioner Boorsma said she would take that. And the Essential Behavioral Health and Chemical Dependency Board, leaving that one, and Commissioner Boorsma said she would take that. Essential Regional Communications Council happens to be the chair and the vice chair. Mr. Jensen and I will fill those positions. First District Association of Local Governments, I'm taking the county position, and previous Commissioner Miller was filling the at-large position from the county. Government Affairs Committee, Commissioner Pierce wanted to stay there, if that's correct.
That's now the Public Affairs Committee.
It should be Public Affairs.
Should be, now it's Public Affairs. They changed their name, that's true. Should be Public Affairs.
I'll fix that, yeah.
All right. The Growth Partnership Board, Commissioner Krogman decided to stay there. Housing and Redevelopment, ex-official as the chair, myself has to sit on that board. ICAP, Inter-Lakes Community Action Governing Board, I will be off that, and Commissioner Boorsma said she would handle that. Jail Expansion Committee, at this point in time, we're going to leave Commissioner Pierce on that, will serve, and also Commissioner Jensen has requested that he stay on the jail expansion committee. The BCOAC Advisory Board, we have Krogman and Jensen are the current members, decided they wanted to stay there. Joint Jurisdiction Committee, we're working on that together, Pierce and myself, so we'll stay there with the help from the First District, so we'll stay there. Joint Powers Board, myself, I will stay, and Commissioner Pierce would like to join that board. Intergovernmental Meeting Group is Mr. Commissioner Jensen and Commissioner Krogman, who wanted to stay there. The Mental Health Task Force, Commissioner Boorsma will take that position. The Local Emergency Planning Commission, LEPC, is the chair, so I will be there. Planning and Zoning Board Member, I will be replacing Commissioner Pierce there. And the alternate will be Mr. Jensen, Commissioner Jensen. The Weed and Pest Board Member will be Commissioner Jensen. Youth and Family Services, a advisory board for the JGC, Commissioner Boorsma, has accepted that assignment. Hospital Board, ex-official member, Mr. Krogman, Commissioner Krogman is on that board and wanted to stay. The County Coroner, Dr. Heep, will stay. Deputy County Coroner is the sheriff, that will stay, and deputy county coroners are the deputies, those will stay the same. The Department Liaisons, the BCOAC, Commissioner Krogman. Community Health, WIC, Commissioner Boorsma. Emergency Management is the chair, so I'll take that one. Equalization will stay the same with Commissioner Jensen. Extension is a new position, somewhat new anyway, and Commissioner Jensen will take that. Finance Office, Mr. Krogman will remain there. Highway Department, I will take. Register of Ds will be Commissioner Boorsma. Sheriff and Detention Center will be Commissioner Jensen. State's Attorney's Office Liaison will be Commissioner Pierce. Veterans and Human Services Department will be Commissioner Boorsma. The Weed and Pest will be Commissioner Jensen. And the Zoning and Drainage has to be me, since I'm on the both. Are there any changes or re-rendations to that list that I just ran through? Any comments? Hearing none, we'll look for a motion to approve those board appointments and department liaisons.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries. We'll go through that. Item nine is the Commission Department Director's Report.
As Bob Hill had mentioned, the NACO Legislative Conference in DC is coming up, March 2nd through the 6th, and looking for some direction on anyone who may wish to attend that. We do have budget for, I think, several people to attend some of the national conventions this year, so I was wondering if there's interest, and then we need to start those discussions, and that doesn't have to happen here, but if someone knows they want to attend that, we need to get you registered and then get travel and accommodations arranged. Bob had indicated that he does have a meeting on the 6th at 10:00 a.m. with Senator Thune already lined up, so in looking at that, that might extend, depending on travel, may extend that out to the 7th too for a return if you don't want to get back really, really late. But is, I guess I'm looking for some direction so we can get together and plan.
Well, I for one didn't make it last year, but I intend to try to get in this year, and I want to be on Bob's flight, but not the bumpy one he had last year. Anybody else like to go to the legislative conference?
No.
If you change your mind, let Stacy know. Other than that, I tend to attend.
Okay. You and I can visit then more about that. Brookings Day at the Legislature is next Wednesday, the 16th. Wondering if you would like to discuss some ideas on maybe putting together some talking points from the county's perspective, so as people go out and have a chance to visit with the different folks out there, that you have sort of a talking point list to have on hand when you get out there? I guess first of all, is there anyone, A, is there anyone going, planning to attend, and B, do you want to brainstorm some talking points that I could put together?
I plan on attending at this point. Anybody else?
At this point, I plan on going.
That's right, yeah.
You are or not?
Right. There's the Communities of Excellence supposed to meet that day, and I'm not sure that's going to happen because Al Hooton is there, and I'm guessing he's going to be down there too, so I'm not sure what they're going to do on that. Al's not going to be there. He is in a meeting, maybe in California, I can't remember. He's going to be somewhere else. Yeah, in Seattle. But if there is a Community of Excellence, I'm not going, and as alternate, I can handle that if you just let me know if the meeting's going.
All right. There's an option to take the Chamber of Commerce's bus for transportation out. It leaves at 5:30 in the morning from the Chamber office. We can either sign up for that or decide to drive ourselves. So I guess the three of us are thinking about it, we'll coordinate.
Angie, are you planning on going tentative? Okay.
Well, I can drive if you want a little more flexibility of the bus, so the problem is the meeting start. I mean, so we got to leave just as early.
We'd leave just as early as the bus, yeah.
Yeah. But I certainly can drive. That way, we can leave home earlier or something like that too.
Okay.
I don't know, would it be possible to get the traverse for next week, Marty? Or would that leave you? So that would be an option too, if we sent, kept the traverse back. Those of you, if you want to drive, you could take the county vehicle instead of taking your personal vehicle out there? And then talking points, are you interested in putting, having me put together some things if you are, so what would those be?
One of the things that, I think we already have the support, and it's not going to be a problem, but it's always nice to talk about, is if you remember at our 10 district meeting, we discussed one of our legislators making amendment to the open meetings law to allow governmental entities to talk about security issues and cybersecurity issues in executive session. And Tim Reed had said that he would work with us to get such a bill developed. That bill is written, and it is, I think Stacy might have, did you send that out to everybody? I can't remember Stacy. But we've got the bill, and if everybody, if you're talking to a legislator, would just be willing to say, we'd really appreciate your support on, and I don't know what the number is, the last time I looked at it, it didn't have a number yet. But that bill, that would allow us then to talk about our emergency planning stuff with Bob in executive session, or our cybersecurity stuff with Sean in executive session, so we'd have a better handle on what's going on.
Stacy, is there a specific time that they're, before, I know the city and the county had representatives that met with the governor.
I haven't seen a schedule for the day.
I think I have that.
At this point, that meeting's a small meeting, and generally, it's just the chair from the county and the mayor from the city that meet along with SDSU officials with the governor. And I don't believe that's actually been set yet. I don't think Governor Noem is.
I'm going to just pass this round. You guys can take a quick look at it. I got scribbles over it. Ignore that. This is the tentative schedule as of maybe last Thursday, but you're right, the governor had not yet committed to a particular time.
There are several other meetings with department heads that are on the schedule that can be attended. There is an open floor to walk out, as Tim Reed called the Bartley secret. You could actually go out on the floor and talk to legislators before they close the floor, and a lot of people don't know that, and it's interesting to go out and catch them at their desk and have a conversation about any of the items that are on our talking points at that time. It's easiest to catch them. It really is difficult to catch them any other time, so that's a good time to do it, or during any of the social events, they may be attending, our local legislators, but you're welcome to also talk to other legislators, other than just our local ones sometimes. That makes an impression if you know anybody that's serving as a senator or representative from another district that you can talk to about any of the talking points. It's a good time to do that early in the morning.
And we're doing something a little different this year, in that in the past, you might remember that when it came to do gallery duty, we split into half, and half went in the Senate and half went to the House to be recognized. This year, if it gets finalized, I believe that this is what's going to happen, everybody's going to go to the Senate first, because the Senate does that right away, and then everybody will move over to the House section and be recognized again by the House. Could you reach out to the EDC and I guess RSVP, let them know that we'll be coming, depending on if Angie's able to make it, and then be able to get the itinerary when it's finalized?
Yeah, we could have them email it to us.
Do you RSVP through EDC or to the chamber?
Chamber.
Chamber.
SDSU will have their choral department out there, I believe.
Pardon me?
Is it the choral department, SDSU's having sang on the steps?
I don't remember.
They have something, and of course, they'll be doing their ice cream in the chambers. In the past, we were always asked to help and assist with that, and last year of the year, before, they started doing it on their own, so we don't have to do that. SDSU choir at the cap, yeah, they'll be in the rotunda at 12:15, SDSU choir. They have a certain time they have to be done and quiet by.
Any other talking point topics that you want added to the list besides the open meetings change?
I don't think it ever hurts to talk a little bit about the 20th Street Overpass and Interchange, if that would be appropriate in a conversation. I guess the other thing too would be drainage. Kind of at a standstill, is there anything that they've heard is coming up? Any type of legislation or anything on drainage that's going to hear anything?
It's relatively early in this fashion, and there'll be numerous bills dropped in the next few days, including Representatives Reed's bill on executive session issue. The other bills, we're just going to have to be lively and look to see what's dropped, if it involves anything, involves the counties. We'll get some direction from Wilcox and our county.
What have we done in the past then, when we've needed to make a decision or anything like that, that they call up and say, hey, we've got this? At times, we've wanted to take an active role as a commission in talking to our association and stuff like that. Previously, I think we had our chair and our vice chair meet with you if there's something, and just reach out to everybody else, because, you know, two weeks between meetings, a lot can happen on pier in those two weeks. So similar to other boards, have an executive committee that can reach out and take stances on some stuff there too, so. Are you talking about after Brookings Day? Yeah, well, just not even throughout the session, not even counting Brookings Day anymore, moving on to, you know, how are we going to react if something comes up, you know, and that we want to weigh in on. I think we should, you know, discuss that and have something in the minutes that talks about how we want to handle that. And this year, the chamber's going to try something different? Every Wednesday at noon in the past, there's been a public affairs meeting, and Matt Krogman has reported back to the group, there's been conversation about what's going on with bills that are related to what we have an interest in, and people had input, but we haven't had a real good attendance at those meetings for the last two years, they've been out at Innovation Campus. And what we're going to try, not campus, but the research center, anyway, what we're going to do this year, it's going to be a call-in number where everybody can call in, they can be in their office and sit and listen and participate if they want, and there'll be information coming out from the chamber. And I think that the first one of those calls is going to be on the 23rd of January, and there should be information, and maybe Stacy, when you call the chamber, you could find out if they've got the call-in information, so that you could give that to everybody. the call-in information, so that you could give that to everybody.
It's happening at noon, right?
At noon, over the noon hour.
And that's what the Public Affairs Committee calling.
Public Affairs, but anybody can participate. You don't have to be on the committee to participate in that.
That's my understanding. They will still meet out at the Innovation Research Park, but you can call in if you can't be out there.
Right. And then, I would be interested in knowing from our department heads if they've been hearing from their state associations, anything that we should be aware of that's going to have an impact on Brookings County in the upcoming legislative session. Anybody hearing anything?
We have things with concealed weapons. And there's, we're just, actually, our executive treasurer for the Sheriff's Association is just making a list now of, of bills that we're watching. We either support or don't support. But concealed weapon will probably be one of the biggest.
Anything else?
Just to branch off of that, Leanne, I'll be introducing a bill with the State Attorneys' Association. It's a little convoluted, so I don't know that I have time to go into detail, but that'll be presented through the Association on my behalf. It's just to, right now, sex offenders can receive a suspended imposition on a violent sex crime, which requires them not to register. So, right now, here in Brookings County, we have individuals that have been convicted of a violent sex crime that are not currently required to register. So, we're going to try to fix that. And so, if you're a sex offender and you receive a suspended imposition on your sentence, you're still going to have to require to register as a sex offender. Right now, the law is you don't have to. So, I'll be introducing a bill to try to fix that, take that discretion away, and require all sex offenders, if you are convicted of a violent sex crime, you still have to register. I think it's a pretty simple community safety argument. So, that'll be forthcoming through the Association on my behalf.
Anything else?
Your report?
Yes, I am not finished yet.
Okay.
Real quick, did we decide if we're going to have a committee to be able to discuss stuff, if we need to make a quick decision on association and stuff, and that kind of thing?
Randy, you mean like, I know we've submitted, like, letters of support towards the bill.
Right. I mean, sometimes.
Stacy can handle that and.
Right. It seemed like we ran into a situation where our association was not taking a stance on something that we wanted to take a stance on. Because, obviously, association represents the members who are members of it, but mostly counties throughout the state. We have different, sometimes, West River has some different issues than East River. And so, we're going to keep an eye on that. I don't think we just depend on our association to make our thing there. We follow it, we go along with them there. But if there's something different that we want to reach out, I think we need to have the ability to discuss it, make a decision fairly quickly, rather than waiting a week and a half or two weeks for our meeting to, to be able to do that. So, but I, usually, it's a person of two people saying, "Hey, you know what? Drainage is an issue for us, and this drainage thing doesn't address our issues." Are we okay with the chair reaching out to our, our legislators, saying, you know, "We're, we're not for this bill. This bill isn't good for us," you know, type of thing, rather than us waiting two weeks, and it's already through committee, and it's already through on the floor of the House, before we reach out to our, our representatives, and they say, "Well, why didn't you tell me this before? I could have maybe helped out in the committee." So, just things like that is what I was, you know, obviously, we're not voting on anything. We're not making policy procedures, but we just want to be able to input to our local people where we're at on some of these, so.
Historically, that's been the chair?
Chair and the vice chair usually meet with Stacy and discuss it and say, "Okay, where's everybody at?" And we reach out to all of us and say, "This is kind of what's coming up. We're, this isn't good for us. This is what we're going to do."
We'll handle it that way. Okay, back to you, Stacey.
The Conservation District agenda was in, included with my packet. That meeting is tomorrow. It is in the afternoon, which is a little bit different, 1:15 at the NRCS Conference Room here in town. Also included with my report was information on the election of a county commissioner representative on the SDRS Board of Trustees. If you're interested in that at all, come and visit with me, and we can talk through that process. We do have, the Director of Equalization position will close, I believe, at the end of this week. So, I need some direction on, does the full commission want to sit in on those interviews? And if so, I think we need to pick out some dates and times so that when we're reaching out, or do you want to put a committee together to determine, do you want to sit down in exec session sometime to determine who you're going to interview, how many, and when? So, as those close, the end of the week, I guess, I'm just kind of looking for process and, and direction on that.
I think the whole board should interview like we did last time for the Director of Equalization.
Do you want, like Stacy mentioned, say there's 10 applications. Do you want somebody to sit down and pick five to interview, or do you want to all look through them and...
I think we should all look through them. I'd like to see all of them. This is an important position.
Do you want to be able to look at those in an executive session at our next meeting, or do we want to move the process ahead a little faster?
When is the deadline again?
The deadline is Thursday, I believe.
22nd is the next meeting.
And we won't meet again until the 22nd?
Would you all be willing to have a special executive session to review those applications and set up an interview process?
I think it'd probably be appropriate. We do need to move that process forward. How about a date for that? How much time will it take to put those applications together for us to review?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Would be able to do that Monday, like, 11?
I, I can't be there, though. From 10 until noon on Monday, that's the only time I have blocked off that day.
Commissioner Jensen, you have a meeting at noon?
Yep. That's why we're going to do it at 11.
Tuesday at 8:30?
It's two hours or less. I'm good. It won't be.
Yeah, we'll just review the applications that day and determine who we want to interview.
That work for you, Larry?
Thanks a little bit.
Okay. Without objection, we will meet as a council and executive session to review the applicants on Tuesday at 8:30.
Do you want to pick out some dates now for interviews as well? Do you want to try to fit those in, maybe, the afternoon of the 22nd? Or later that week, or do you want to try to fit something in later next week? I know schedules with five people, schedules are going to start filling up if they haven't already. So, I guess I'd like to put some dates and times, because I don't know, I don't really know what it looks like, because we don't know how many we're going to interview. But I'd like to set, you know, maybe a couple of, just a chunk of time set aside, or something now, so that you have it tentatively on your calendar.
Tuesday, the 22nd, that afternoon after the meeting works fine for me.
For me, also.
Growth Partnership meeting at 11:30. That'll go till 2:00 on the 22nd. So, I would have to either miss that or...
Are we anticipating a long meeting on the 22nd? We have a lot of...
So far, it doesn't look too bad, but that's, it's very early yet.
Yeah. Two interviews after our meeting on the 22nd.
We have to say a specific time, though, so she can schedule the appointments.
Yeah. Well, we won't know, we don't have to schedule appointments until after the 15th, until we review. But I just want to set it, kind of, a chunk of time aside. I'm guessing you'll need probably an hour for each interview.
Yeah.
So, even a couple of afternoons.
Yeah.
Even if you have a couple of afternoons available, say, at, you know, from 2:00 or 2:30 on the 22nd on, do you have a Wednesday or a Thursday afternoon that week that would work, or not?
Both of those are okay.
Yeah, I could make, make any of those.
23rd is good. 24th is not for me.
Okay. The 23rd for you, Leanne?
I can if we start at 1:30 in the afternoon. The EDC meets for their quarterly earlier.
So, let's say 1:22, starting at 2:30, and then 1:23, starting at 1:30. And plan that out till 5 o'clock both those days, and then we'll see how many applications we get, how many we decide to interview, and then we'll schedule appropriately.
Is it typical to shortlist three, so that you're sort of limiting the time and energy?
We got to see what, we'll figure that out on the 15th and see who's, there's some times you might just get it down to two, even, so.
We're really lucky. We'll have six good applicants.
And then, just a couple of other quick things to note. On Monday, we do have the Volga Fire Department county feed. That starts at 5:30 at the Volga Fire Department. We've been talking, discussing Brookings Day at the Legislature next Wednesday. Monday, the 21st county offices are closed in honor of the Martin Luther King Junior Day Holiday. Intergovernmental meeting, we still have Ryan and Larry on that. There is a meeting scheduled for the 29th at 3:00 here in the community room for that.
I have a question.
So, it's Tuesday, the 29th, at 3:00. And I can send out some information on that, too. Kind of a reminder email. And then, lastly, what's that?
I will be gone for that one. I will be in Pier. What, what time was it at again, though?
3:00.
I'll see. I may, I may be able to postpone traveling down there.
No, I can cover it for you, too.
And I could cover, too, whichever you want to do it, Mike.
Yeah, they already sent me an invitation, so.
Why don't, why don't you plan on it? Because I, I have meetings at 5:00 in Pier. I can't wait, so.
And then, lastly, and this is coming up a little ways out, but on Tuesday, February 5th, it's, it's from 9:30 to 2:00. Is that a commission meeting day?
Yes.
Okay, never mind. Well, the First District sent out, there's a, a Governor's Office of Economic Development is doing a, kind of, a workshop down in Madison that day. So, I will reach out to, I think that's through First District, but if that's scheduled, that's also a commission day. So, that doesn't, that doesn't work so well for us. So, that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions? Saying done, we'll move on to item 10, the State Attorney's Office report. Dan?
Well, I don't have too much to report. Been in office for a little under a week. Took office on Wednesday. And then, obviously, with the transition being the way it was, just getting caught up on cases as best as I can. The staff has been great, very accommodating. I inherited an office, though, that is short, two support staff and then one deputy states attorney. So, one of the more pressing items in the next month will be to fill those vacancies. As the commission is probably aware, we posted the two positions, the support staff positions, last month. We received a number of applications, and we'll be conducting interviews on some of those applications here in the next couple of weeks, coordinating with Human Resources as well as Commissioner Pierce, who will play a role in, in deciding to fill those. It's a victim witness coordinator, and then the, one of the legal assistants. Received a number of qualified applications, so I, I have no doubt we'll be able to select two individuals that will play a team part in the State Attorney's Office. The position for deputy states attorney, who will be tasked with handling some of the abuse and neglect matters, as well as the juvenile matters, that posting is out in the State Bar newsletter, as well as other outlets. So, we're looking at filling that position. I think that's probably going to be a little bit more difficult to fill, just because the attorneys that will be applying for that position will likely be coming from outside of Brookings. And so, that's always, always a challenge. So, I'm a little sympathetic with the Sheriff's Office in that I'm one of the offices here in the county that, that is down a few. But, like I said, the support staff so far has been great, picking up where some of others have left off, and so the office is functioning well. But, yeah, I'm excited to be here. I, I hope I can be an asset to the county, and I'll work hard to do so. So, any questions?
Saying done. Welcome again.
All right.
Go on to item 11, Commissioner Reports and Discussion Items. We do have some correspondence we received. Public Utilities Commission Letter and a Christmas Kids Corpse Letters. Stacy, do we need to review those before we do this, or not?
No. Those are just for your information.
FYI. All right, we'll start with Commissioner Pierce.
Thank you. On January 3rd, I attended the Public Affairs Meeting, and we've talked about a lot that went on at that meeting. But I did want to also tell you that the dates have tentatively been set for the legislative forums. January 26th will be the District 7 Forum here in this room. February 9th will be District 4 and 7. And then, again, on February 23rd will be District 7 for the legislative forums. Yesterday, I met with the group that's working on the 20th Street Overpass Interchange issues. And the group talked about how it might be beneficial for the city and county to jointly send a letter to our senators who did provide support for our last application and thanking them for that. And if you're all right with Commissioner Bartley as our chair signing such a letter, what we talked about, the, the mayor was at that meeting. I'll kind of put a draft together. He'll look at it. And then, is it all right with you if Commissioner Bartley signs a letter saying, "Thank you for your help. We'll probably be applying again"? Something to that effect. Is that satisfactory? I did talk with Dan, and eventually, we need to talk with Bob, but it's too soon right now. We'll start up with the State's Attorney's review of the planning and zoning ordinances, but after giving him an opportunity to get his feet a little wet in, in the office, and we'll get that back on schedule again. And I think that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Commissioner Boersma, should be a short report, huh?
I got nothing.
Commissioner Cogman.
Yeah, and I don't have anything, either. Dan?
All right. Well, on the 18th, attended Steph Miller's reception. The 19th, Joint Jurisdiction Meeting, we're plodding along with that. Had some preliminary drafts. We've still got some parts to put together for that. The 23rd to the 29th, I enjoyed Christmas with my grandkids in Seattle, so I was out of here. On January 2nd, obviously, the swearing in ceremony. And on the 3rd, attended the Public Affairs. And that concludes my report. Last item on our agenda was an addition to the agenda for an executive session under South Dakota Codified Law 1-2, 5-2, Item 1, Personnel, and Item 3, Consulting with Legal Counsel. Is there a motion to move into executive session?
So, move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will take a 10-minute break and meet in executive session.